Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the 2022 Village Development Candidates Forum. My name is Michael Bonifidi and I'm your moderator for the evening. I know we're gonna have more folks coming in. We've got a lot of information to go over, it's the beginning, so I'd like to do that. And if folks come in, we'll catch up or we'll repeat what we have to repeat. So we have the mayoral candidates and the trustee candidates here. Obviously, there's one mayoral seat, we have three candidates for that. We have two trustee seats and we have four for two seats. And as you know, there are four trustee seats and two come up in each election cycle, and that's for consistency. So we do have two seats available at this point in time. Can everybody hear me? Raise your hand in the back? Okay. If you have a difficulty at any time as the candidates begin answering questions, just raise your hand and please let us know. Thank you for joining us. Exits are located. Obviously, the door that came in is a legal exit directly behind you, and you can see up the stairs. If anything disastrous happens, it happened. Please go in a slow, orderly fashion and make sure you and your neighbor get out safely. So I'd like to tell you a little bit about the forum. Most of you might know, but maybe not. This is all volunteer. I think we have seventeen, eighteen volunteers here this evening. We no longer have a chapter of legal women voters. A lot of the folks that are here helped with that. And I know we have at least three people here that were moderators, a president of the board, a lot of people that worked in that capacity throughout the years. And Lake Country Media picked up the ball when that chapter left. And this is not just for Elvian forums, but throughout the county, basically. If not for the efforts of Lake Country Media and the volunteers, you would not be able to have candidates forum. So our goal is twofold. It's so that you are able to talk to candidates openly, firsthand, ask them direct questions, and they give you the answer. And the candidates are able to get their information to you in a fair, unbiased, safe forum. This is not a debate. They don't debate each other. They answer your questions. We have a couple editorial questions that we'll be asking, but all the other questions will be coming from you. So back to being volunteer-driven. There's a list. If you pick up information, you'll see that other volunteers on the back. I'm not gonna go through that because I've got enough to talk about before we get to the candidates. We don't want to waste that time, but please at least read them. Most of them are gonna have badges on, name badges. If nothing else, thank them when you see them because they're giving them their time, knowing the competition, what's over and any way for this. And I know we have three sitting or former county supervisors here helping. We have former trustees. We have two county legislators helping. Past president of the league, executive director of the chamber. So we have qualified people that have lots going on in their lives that they choose to come here and make sure that this is run because it's important to us. Lake Country Media is a sponsor. And you know what that is. That's the Penny Saver and it's your lead tub. So that might not sound like a lot. They don't get anything for that. They don't really need the publicity that they run a forum. They donate all the paper goods, the advertisements, everything that's going on. Pretty much, they donate or somebody has donated. And honestly, they do that because they believe in the mission. So that's two volunteers that I am going to thank right here, and I'm grateful and I am thanking them. Second one is Lockstone Center where we are right now. I don't know if you were ever near this, the bird here, the paint carpet, but you have got to be impressed with the difference. This place is really incredibly cool. And it's not easy to find a facility like this that welcomes you in to have a forum like this. Round floor, plenty of space, they turn the heat up, down, so it's not too hot in here.
We don't fight!
Not covered for. So I probably get a nickel for that. Parking, everything that we have hoped for. So they're very generous. I have to thank them twofold. One, for the generosity and aloneness to do this and welcoming us. They've been in here many, many hours getting ready. Two, I have to thank the choosing Elvian to bring their vision to it. Because this is really cool. And I have to tell you, I know for a fact that most of this work has been done by Natasha and John. Yeah, they had somebody do the floor and do the heating, but all this crap, the woodwork, the ideas, that's all on them. So, thank you very much. Okay, back to protocol, rules, guidelines. You can ask any question you want. You have to write it down on the pad, hold it up. We have two runners that are gonna come and get it. They're gonna bring it up to the screeners and the screeners are gonna screen it. So you're not gonna stand up and yell at questions. So, any question you want, you can put on the pad. If you have a problem, both the runners are very capable of writing a question down for you. Don't worry about your spelling or your grammar. The question will come up to the screeners. The screeners will screen the question, it comes down our goal, and then it comes to me, and then I ask the question. So the question you write might not be the question that you hear, and it might not make it through the screeners. You can ask whatever question you want, but that doesn't mean we're gonna ask the candidates. They're not gonna have personal questions asked, we're not gonna have inappropriate questions, and we were only gonna have questions that are germane to the administration of the village. So what that means is, don't ask a question about mask mandates or immigration law or the SAFE Act. Those are important topics. They're very important, but they're not our top one hundred and fifty items that we need to pay attention to in the village development. So does that make sense for a village election? Germane to the village. Okay, so the third thing is, we're gonna have four or five questions that mean the same thing, that are on the same topic. The screeners are gonna kinda put that together and make a question out of it. So if you've asked something and it's not exactly what you thought was gonna be asked and you're not happy, raise your paper up and put it back down on a piece of paper, and we'll see what happens when it comes back through. Maybe they got it wrong, but more than likely, you'll be okay because it's a question that seven or eight of you asked, and we don't wanna ask it eight times to put it next to once. Any questions regarding that protocol? You can ask questions throughout the evening. We have a phone number that people can call into if they couldn't have made it here. Now, that's been advertised. So Mr. Kent, I believe is gonna manage the phone, so calls come in, he's gonna take that, that goes through the very same process that goes down through the chamber. I did all three of them. Questions will be timed, responses will be timed, and there's a reason for that. So we ask questions, that's pretty basic. And I gave an example. How many years have you lived in Orney's Town? First of all, that's a loaded question. It probably wouldn't get past the screeners, but that question, because you're supporting somebody that has lived here their entire life, and you're trying to kinda infer that if you haven't lived here your entire life, maybe you're not qualified to be on the village board. I'm just saying as an example. That question, I give fifteen seconds to. Now, the answer takes five seconds. Six years, my entire life, but I know for a fact how somebody like Mr. Henry Smith answers that question. What Henry says is, "Well, I've not been here my entire life, but I got here as fast as I could get here." So I'm gonna give him the fifteen seconds for that. And I know that to be true because Henry went to Benjamin Franklin High School in the city of Rochester, where my lovely wife Judy called him at. So is that a coincidence? So that's why it's a fifteen-second question, it's not a minute question. These folks don't need to take a minute to talk about that. Each candidate's gonna have time for an opening segment, a closing statement. Do you see the order we're sitting in? It's random. We went through a process as they entered. The only significance to this order is the three mayoral candidates first, and then the trustees. When we ask a question, it'll be alternating. So the same person will not have to answer every question first. And there are the questions, and if you're putting a question, you can make it for trustees, mayoral, or all. Joe can keep track of that, who I go to first, because my brain is not capable. Most of that stuff falls through the bottom. I don't know about you folks, but I need to make lists where my lists are now. So, Mr. Billy Lusman, is he present? Would you join me, please, sir? In due to the honor of leading us in a pleasurable manner to our flag, it's Amen Law. Everybody, please rise. My dearest.
(Inaudible)
You know, just to pause for a minute, I haven't got minutes right long. With all the difficulties and challenges that we have had over the last several years or what are ongoing challenges, we are fortunate, very, very fortunate to live in this place, in this country, at this time. And that we can have a forum like this and not be fearful of it. So I just think that's something that we all need to keep in mind and remember. With that, unless I've missed something, I'm gonna introduce the candidates. And I think they're gonna each respond to me, so we're gonna make sure that their mic's working and it's operational. The first is Mrs. Vicki Elsenheimer.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm good.
How are you? I'm fine, thank you. Mr. Kevin Graham, here. Mr. Angel Aliar Jr.
Evening, Michael.
Evening, Michael? Hello, just the microphone? Okay. Ms. Joyce Riley.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Mr. Dan Conrad.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Sandra Walker.
Good evening, everyone.
Mr. Ted McMurray.
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna begin with opening statements. Each candidate has ninety seconds, and they might hear something written down, and they will just talk about what they want to. And we're gonna start with Ms. Victoria Elsenheimer.
Vicki is fine. Good evening, I'm Vicki Elsenheimer, and I'm part of the Elvian Forward Movement. I've lived in Elvian for fifty years, I've served in the Army for seventeen years, and recently retired from the State University of New York with thirty-five years total state time. Like most of you, I see the current state of Elvian, and as an retired person, I have decided to run for village mayor because I see a need. I'm in a season of life to dedicate not just to running the village government, but also connecting and building relationships with businesses, community leaders, and residents of our community. I want to encourage, improve, and foster growth in our community. I believe my acquired skill sets, training, and availability in available resources will assist us in being successful. I will operate with transparency and integrity to move Elvian forward. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. And I'm gonna ask people, hold your applause to redominate all the opening statements, please. Mr. Kevin Graham.
Good evening, thank you for all coming. I'm Kevin Graham, I'm the independent candidate for mayor, and my party is Elvian Pride, Working Together. This is my first endeavor in running for municipal office, and I gotta tell you, I've learned a lot of new things along the way. Being new is a good thing. It brings perspectives, new ideas, fresh set of eyes, and ultimately, hopefully change. I've worked for a number of nonprofits, and have over thirty years' experience in finance and administration. I've worked on budgets at smallest three million to twenty-three million. I'm licensed CPA for twenty-three years, and I feel that my professional experiences would become a valuable asset for the Elvian government. I've been a resident in Elvian my entire life, the last twenty-plus years I've lived in the village. I'm an Elvian high graduate, and I'm proud to say that my four children are all graduates, and my youngest graduates this year in 2022. I'm running for mayor simply because my boots are here, I care about the community, and I wanna get involved. Serving as mayor would allow me to work with others to better our community for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Angel Aliar Jr.
Thank you, Michael. I just wanna thank Michael, Lockstone, and also the Penny Saver for having us here tonight. There we go. A couple things that I feel that's important when it comes to the village. One, business. We need to be more open to any and all businesses that want to come here. Two, transparency, whether it's the budget or any type of operations that currently have been here in the village or possibly in conjunction with another municipality. Three is culture. Three is culture. I believe that we have to change the culture here in Elvian, have a positive, tenew attitude when it comes to all things that occur here in Elvian. Without that, I don't believe that we can grow. Again, I wanna thank Eileen, Stan, and Gary, the operating board members. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Joyce Riley.
Before my time starts, I just wanna say thank you to everyone for taking time out of their busy day to be here tonight. I know you've been Elsah from the library here, and lets me know how important this is to you, because it certainly is important to me. I've been a nurse for greater than fifty years, really, and I retired here in 2015. Since the time I retired, I've become, I became immediately involved in the Cobblestone Society, the library. I'm now a volunteer, and also, I also participate in the hospital locally. That means that my heart is here in Elvian, and I'm part of Vicki of the Move Elvian Forward Movement. And that, to me, is a critical thought because moving forward means not moving sideways. At sideways, you're not advancing. We need to move forward. So because I know that I have a time crunch, I'm cutting my speech in part and half to tell you how it's going to be done. And it will be done by being transparent, transparent to all the stakeholders that are involved. This is the businesses, the community leaders, and the residents. It's being action-oriented. And when I say action-oriented, that means that we not only assess and determine a plan of action, we actually go out and do it, and then we reassess it for its effectiveness, and we change if it's needed. We're also going to encourage and support new and old businesses.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you very much.
Good day, Mr. Henry. Is that better?
Yes.
Sorry about that. So I'm gonna start by mentioning, I am a current business owner. I have a candy store on Main Street. I'm also a current president of the Lions Club. I am on the board of directors for Kova. On top of things, I was 2019 citizen of the year on the hub, so I am heavily invested and I have been for years in the community. I've worked on budgets with Kova, with the library, also am a past board member there. I grew up with my grandfather, and some of you might know Lou Wolston, the judge of Carlton. I grew up seeing the community involvement that he had, and now I just felt like it's my time, so I need to, you know, start stepping up and helping out more. I wanna see more youth, I wanna see everybody coming together. You know, to me, everybody compares other villages and other towns to each other, but it takes more than just elected officials, it takes business owners, it takes the community, it takes elected officials, it takes everybody to come together to make a village better. And I hope to be able to continue what started already and keep moving forward and keep the village, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sandra Walker.
Good evening, my name is Sandra Walker. I've lived in the village since I was a teenager, graduated from Elvian High School, my children also graduated from Elvian High School. And for, and as you probably know, this is probably my fourth go round to run for village trustee. The reason why I keep trying is because I really care about this community and really look like to make a difference. For too long, I've seen a need for responsive and inclusive leadership at the village level. There seems to have been a steady erosion of the village over the years, and while I have seen some positive movement towards revitalization, and I applaud those efforts, however, there's still a long way to go. If we are to continue as a village, we need to all step up together as a community and do what is necessary to make Elvian a busy and vibrant village once again. A community where our children will stay here because they can find jobs and they find the experiences that they need for their families.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Mr. Ted McMurray.
Just wanna thank everybody for coming out, Lake County Penny Saver, Hub, Lockstone, Mr. Bonifidi for hosting it, everybody who's behind the scenes to make sure that this is going off. Appreciate it, thank you so much. Just wanna say real quick, I'm a very simple person, what you see is what you get, a spade is a spade. I'm all about accountability, transparency, holding everybody that's responsible for saying what they say they're gonna do and making sure that they follow through on it. Over the last two-plus decades of working and interacting within the community, I've become in tune with many facets of a great community here. During that time, I've got to listen to some people running down while only handfuls stepped up to take charge and make a change. We as a community have sat back and allowed fractures and bites to happen with little to no effort to stop it, and that's why I'm running for trustee. I wanna help rebuild the feeling of pride and continuity within our community by working hard, by working hand in hand, and going step by step with organizations and NICO and its great community. I want to put on display the great works that our seemingly overlooked departments do for ensuring roads are cleared in the winter, water flows to the faucets, and also a wave once it goes down the drain. Showcasing the ones that arrive in event of emergencies of all types, the ones that make everything work by ensuring deadlines are met and bills are sent out. Then there are the ones that we don't even know that we need to ensure that our fur friends are found and taken care of, and the loved ones and our resting places are prepped and always taken care of. These are the members of our community that most don't even know and are doing things that's something that they need to be known for and represented. Thank you.
Thank you. Our first question is for everyone. It's a sixty-second answer question. Mr. Graham, you have the honor of answering it first. And what is your main goal for your first thirty days if you're fortunate enough to be
First thirty days, I would see is building relations, not only with the employees of the village, but reach out to town heads, county heads, I get to know them, and introduce myself. I wanna be one-on-one with the department heads in the village to get a feeling of the issues they are dealing with and the concerns. And the first order of business would be the budget. The fiscal budget is due to the village board by April twenty-ninth, and thirty days are a pretty short time in terms of, well...
Thank you. Mr. Aliar, you're up.
Hello, just wanna make everybody clear. First thirty days, I wanna reach out to every single business owner. I wanna see where they're at when it comes to the village, if they need any help, any assistance, any questions they may have that weren't answered. I wanna be able to be available and promote them as well. I wanna make sure that Honor Village website, we can list every single business that's in Elvian, not just the village, not just the town, in Elvian. That might be a concern. In addition to that, I wanna establish transparency, that way everybody knows exactly how much we're spending, where we're spending, and where can we improve everything when it comes to the village. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Joyce Riley.
Like everyone else, I too will focus on the budget within the first thirty days. And also...
If I turn it up, it's gonna echo.
Hello? I can talk, Bob, can you hear me? Okay. I agree with everyone, within the first thirty days, because there has been no work done on the budget, we'll focus on the budget. We will meet those businesses, those business people that we can during that time, but I think we should also be looking at only at the issues that they bring to us because no action can be made except to focus on getting the budget done and working with the department heads and looking at what they have and anticipation for issues that we will need to pay for. And those things, we need to be transparent with our community and let them know what's coming down the pipe, because all too often, we get a pipe and we have no idea why. And our focus will be trying to hold the budget so that there isn't a tax increase, but also to look at if there is one, why.
Thank you. Ms. Conrad.
All right, I'll try this one. Can everybody hear me? You guys, what, hear me?
No.
Okay. Within the first thirty days, obviously, the budget's most important, you have the three parts, the sewer, the water, and the user generated tax. And try to keep that under one point seven, and definitely keep it at the zero, the best we can to ignore tax increases in the village. On top of that, getting to know the department heads and their needs and what it takes to make the village run, because without the village heads, we wouldn't have our streets plugged, we wouldn't have anything done in the village, so we need to get to know them and their needs also on top of the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Walker.
I agree with, I agree with my co-candidate say that the most important thing within that first thirty days is the budget. And we do understand that there is also a contract coming up with the DPDW, so that will need to be looked at very closely. After meeting with some of the department heads already, we know some of the issues that are out there, so we can start addressing those right away. And the other thing that I would like to do is really, truly, I think it's time to move this village election to June. It would make life so much easier for candidates, and I think it would bring out more voters, and it would make it a lot easier for people to get to know their candidates before they vote for them.
Thank you. Mr. McMurray.
Can everybody hear me if I speak like this?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Within the first thirty days, like everybody else has indicated, I definitely plan on working on that budget. The current board right now, they know they have been looking at it because that's what they're looking at. I've had the pleasure of already meeting with most of the department heads, there's been one or two I've not had the chance to meet with as of yet. So as far as their needs or their wants or their concerns, we've already addressed some of that, and we do have a plan for some of that. That website that we have right now is my, is a goal I plan that I do wanna work on, that is something that we need to get going, get information flowing, complete transparency. The budget is an absolute huge thing, that is something that's gonna be done no matter what. But that website is something that constituents, you guys, myself included, need to have for pretty full of information, whether it's the budget, whether it's election, getting to know who's on the board, who you need to talk to, and where you need to go to to get information. So that website is something I'm planning on working on throughout the thirty days. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Elsenheimer.
So like everyone else has said, the budget is going to be prioritized in addressing any shortfalls that we may have. We are currently aware of a seventy thousand dollar water budget deficit, so addressing those shortfalls and meeting with the department heads individually and scheduling individual meetings moving forward those thirty days. Also, we...
So like everyone else has said, the budget is going to be prioritized in addressing any shortfalls that we may have. We are currently aware of a $70,000 water budget deficit, so addressing those shortfalls and meeting with the department heads individually and scheduling individual meetings moving forward those 30 days. Also meeting with, uh, business leaders, uh, and also, uh, downtown building owners to address the, the, uh, empty storefronts. And also addressing, uh, the canal, the, the bridge, the main street bridge being down for about 18 months. So those are high priorities, um, in addressing it and making sure that the business owners have a plan, that we have a plan with them, and, um, and can keep Alvin moving forward for those, that, that 18 months.
Mr. Javier, you're first on this question, and the question is a 30-second question, and it is, with what groups or organizations have you worked with for the betterment of our community?
First of all, um, currently a part of the subcommittee involving the planning board.
The first committee that I'm actually a part of is a subcommittee of the planning board, determining what is affecting us on the downtown area, what development can be done, and what monies could be available to property owners, um, business owners, that's really important to me. In addition to that, currently a part of the Strawberry Festival Committee, I believe that's a festival that should be continued throughout Alvin, um, and also bring new things to our village. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs., Ms. Alzheimler, you're next. With what groups or organizations have you worked with for the betterment of our community? It's a 30-second answer.
So I worked with NOFA, the ASAP program. I was the head coach for cheerleaders for two years, assistant coach for a year, and during that time with NOFA, I was also voted, uh, uh, head cheerleading coach, uh, throughout the organization.
Thank you. Mr. Graham? With what groups or organizations have you worked with for the betterment of our community? It's a 30-second answer.
Okay, clearly, I've worked, entered CFO for Orleans Hospital, now I'm a supportive of care for all needs, someone who's not a problem. And there, I have, I've worked for Special Olympics and volunteered for Cystic Vibration Foundation.
Thank you. Ms. Walter?
For the past five years, I've been member of the O'Forture Health Foundation, working with Medina Hospital. I have also worked with, along with Hands for Hope and Booty, Booty Morning Productions. And I have also done, we're not the census, which I think is a big help for our community.
Thank you. Mr. McMurray, with what groups or organizations have you worked with for the betterment of our community? It's a 30-second answer.
For the better part of over 12 years, I've been a part of the NOFA, which is youth football, uh, from head coach to voting commissioner, I'm on the executive board as well as head coach. Part of the Strawberry Festival Committee right now, was part of the, one of the people who helped put on the light parade this past winter, part of Lions Club, uh, I was part of Royal back when that was on, I, there's a couple different ones I know I'm forgetting, I'm sorry, I'm on the spot. Um, sorry.
Thank you. Ms. Riley, with what groups or organizations have you worked with for the betterment of our community? It's a 30-second answer.
I have been, um, and I'm still very active in the library board, uh, the, the library board, the Medina Hospital Foundation, uh, I've been on the Cobblestone Society, uh, board, and I also participated in People Embracing Diversity, which is a group that presents programs at the library, uh, and I just want to add that in all of these groups, I've always come prepared to participate, not just be there, so I can put that on the resume. And most people that know me know that to be a fact.
Thank you. Ms. Conrad, with what groups or organizations have you worked with for the betterment of our community? 30-second answer.
Currently president of the Alvin Lions Club, on the board of Records for COVID, I run the kids games at the Alvin Summer Festival, uh, past board member of the library, I've put on a youth fishing derby in 2019, um, I'm current member of the Alvin Ridge Association to help other businesses, um, there's several things, uh, that I've...
Thank you. Can you hear in the background? Are you struggling to hear, but they don't use the microphone?
Maybe they could stand up and they're in great voice.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, try and use the microphone, three, four inches from your face and speak directly. It's a non-malped directional, which means it's unidirectional, so it's got to be right about here. And then if you can hear yourself, then it's not loud, move it a little bit closer. Joe should have really tried again so it doesn't squeak. Problem is you can't raise the volume up too high, but we're starting to get some feedback. So let's try that, or go with microphones, because they really do want to hear your answers. I know it's not comfortable to stand up and speak, and I don't know if we'd be able to project any better, so can we give it a go with getting some microphones again? Okay, next question is just for trustees, and Mr. McMurray is first. 15-second question. Sounds like a brace. With what groups or department would you prefer to be a liaison with? Why and how?
It's a two-part thing. I would love to be a liaison over top of ABD. I would love to help them get the explorers program going again and work with them to help find funds to start a training facility.
Thank you very much.
Secretary?
That was it.
Oh, okay.
Thank you so much.
I would like to be a liaison with Sewer and Water, because the two are connected and they are, I see them as the growth mechanism for our community. We need to grow them and, um, and we need to work together.
Thank you. Mr. Conrad, with what village or department would you prefer to be a liaison with? Why and how?
I would, I would say Alvin Department, because I support them and we need more support for them, and I believe in the community, and they're a big part of our community.
Thank you. Ms. Walter?
I think I would like to liaison with Coach Officer and with the village office. Uh, with my records management background and with my supervisor background, I think I would be a great assistance to the village clerk's office and, uh...
Thank you. This next question is a radio question only. It's a 60-second question. Uh, Ms. Alzheimler, you are first to answer. What do you feel is the greatest challenge facing the village? How do you plan to address it?
I think the greatest challenge for us is building our downtown, addressing the empty buildings that we have. Um, Alvin currently looks like it's, it's an abandoned, um, area because there are so many vacant buildings. And I think partnering with the current businesses and having conversations with the building owners so that rent can be affordable to folks that want to come in and build a business, um, just working on beautification of our downtown, of our village, because let's, let's, let's be real, no one's going to want to come in to a village that's looking the way ours is. So we need to unify, we need to revitalize, and we need to get excited as a community and, and do this moving Alvin forward together.
Thank you. Mr. Graham? What do you feel is the greatest challenge facing the village? How do you plan to address it? 60-second answer.
I feel one of the biggest challenges facing the village is fiscal constraints. Do you like the downtown as well, but, uh, rising costs, inflation is at a high, our population is stagnant and declining, and that adds a further tax burden to the residents. I think that's a serious challenge, we need to look at, you know, look at every base, try to find efficiencies and reduce costs to keep taxes steady.
Thank you. Mr. Javier? What do you feel is the greatest challenge facing the village? How do you plan to address it?
I'm willing to expenses, understanding that we need to have growth all throughout the village, it's not just downtown, it's not just the avenues, not just at the, uh, Arnold Gregory complex. We also need to make any type of grants and information available to the businesses all along the canal, at the county level, but just pass, well, not just pass, but they're working on a large grant project to assist any business within a thousand feet of the canal. I think that's important. I think we need to make that clear, have information out there for people, and go through that application process. And if there's any assistance or questions, I think the village is the first stop for any business. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a trustee-only question. Ms. Riley, you are first. The 45-second question. How do you propose the village address vacant and underutilized commercial properties in the village? An example, wherever we go on West Academy Street.
That, I would like to say the answer is, is simple. Um, I, I know that we have had difficulty sometimes finding the owners of these properties, but we need to, uh, follow the legal path that it takes. I'm not necessarily a fan of the, um, county, uh, paying us the taxes and then later when those buildings sell, having to recoup those taxes, then that makes a, a cheap building more expensive and no one wants to buy it, that we need to find another more creative way, uh, to get those buildings back on the tax roll. Or we need to tear them down so that something fresh can be built.
Thank you. Mr. Conrad? How do you propose the village address vacant and underutilized commercial properties in the village? Example is the railroad depot on West Academy Street.
I would say, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Can everybody hear me now? Okay. Um, I, I guess first of all, to go with the vacant buildings, is you can't attack the owners, which, you got to try to work with them, you got to set up some kind of system with, with businesses and with vacant buildings, because if you want to fill a vacant building, you, you can't just come at the owner and say, oh, this is what we're going to do. To, to me, you got to work within the system, you got to come up with some kind of incentives, you got to come up with some kind of business to help businesses go into the buildings. I'd like to see something set up so where we can get a business, talk to the building owner and say, this is a business we would like to put in, what can we do to try to make this work with everybody? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Walter? How do you propose the village address vacant and underutilized commercial properties in the village? Example is the railroad depot on West Academy Street.
That is a hard question, and I have listened to my other candidates and agree with a lot that they say, yes, we do have to work with these building owners, uh, but ultimately, they have to understand too that the village can't do everything for them. They have to step forward and they have to do, do for themselves too. They need to at least maintain these buildings so that they look good from the street, because you can't bring in business if you don't look like you're ready for it.
Thank you. Mr. McMurray? How do you propose the village address vacant and underutilized commercial properties in the village? Example would be the railroad depot on West Academy Street.
First thing we want to do is reach out to the building owners, talk to them, see what their plans are for their buildings. Do they have plans? Is it the rent, is it the home, or is it to sell? If it's the rent, try to help them maybe recruit businesses. We have two dance studios and a wrestling academy downtown, maybe Celebrity Day Spa might want to come in and open up a shop down here to help cater to some of these parents that are waiting for their students and their children to come be done. So it's to help recruit businesses. As far as the one building that you used as an example, that's a beautiful gem of the star, of a piece of the Star Delve that we could use. We have the North Pole, uh, the North Pole Express that's in Medina, we can circle up in front of funds and maybe get that in to get in and bring some more revenue into Alvin come season time.
Thank you. What should the village do about residential properties that are vacant, abandoned, or in disrepair?
Hello, hello. Okay, we'll talk, you know, the topic on the zombie home. Um, as far as researching the taxes, as far as who owns those properties, is it, is a property owner, are they a mortgage lien? We need to work with, you know, the bank as far as starting who, who owns them, working with code enforcement to see if there's violations and, and move ahead that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Javier? What should the village do about residential properties that are vacant, abandoned, or in disrepair?
I think it's important to establish what exactly is going on with that property. Uh, there is a process, if the owner were to abandon, or there's some type of health issues or anything like that, where they are no longer involved in that property, uh, the court system along with the bank has to go through the legal process. They may, that may take up one, two, three years, or even longer. I think it's important that we were able to post it on our village website, letting people know, hey, we understand this is an issue. It can create blight in our community, but that's something we do not want, but also understand that there is a process, and I think it's important that our village board understands that we are there to protect private property rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Alzheimler? 60-second response. What should the village do about residential properties that are vacant, abandoned, or in disrepair?
The village would need to work with, uh, the village attorney to make sure that we're following the necessary steps and processes. Um, with any building that's abandoned or, or in need of, of disrepair, they're, they're not able to, to rebuild it or it's in need of disrepairable. Um, I would say that that property would need to be, uh, taken down so that, you know, kids are not playing around it and it, it becomes a health risk or a safety risk, uh, to neighboring properties, um, but definitely following the guidelines, uh, so that the village should be able to see.
Thank you. This is a 30-second response, the question is for everyone, and Mr. Javier, you are first. Your feelings on cooperation and consolidation of services with the town of Alvin School District, including police departments? Your feelings on cooperation and/or consolidation of services? Basically, I think the question, remember, probably came from several different people. Want your input on consolidating service, which the village of Alvin already does. We have overlapping services, we cooperate with towns. I think they want to know if your vision is to continue that, if you're in favor of it, if you want to remain isolated, or consolidate some services to reduce the probably financial impact. I'm guessing that's what the question is about. Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
Okay.
Um, I do think it's important that we continue to establish good relationships with all municipalities. If you look at the fire department or, uh, most current budget, uh, they've made about quarter of a million dollars in revenue. Um, I don't know how many actually know that. That's important, um, in addition to the police department. We do receive actually revenue from them, um, when it comes to services, um, and anything that is established between municipalities, I think it needs to be, again, public, understand what those guidelines are, and how could we either make them better or more efficient.
Thank you. Ms. Alzheimler, you're next, a 30-second response. Question is about consolidation of services, cooperation, basically with surrounding entities including your school district or towns.
Shared governance is always, uh, a good thing. Um, with shared governance, there's shared responsibilities, shared costs, uh, which provides a savings to not only the Alvin community, but also our neighboring communities of Holly, Medina, um, so shared governance, I'm, I'm definitely in favor of that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Graham? Your feelings of cooperation, consolidation of services with town and/or school district, other entities around us?
Yeah, I would agree, I, I agree with the shared services arrangements, I mean, there's opportunities that the sh...
I mean, there's opportunities that the shared equipment and costs, and I think overall helps all the towns and communities in this area, so I'm totally in, I'm in favor, totally in favor of shared costs.
Thank you. Mr. Conrad, your feelings of cooperation or consolidation of services with surrounding entities such as the town of Elvian and the Elvian Center School District?
Um, I know, I'm, just like everybody else, in total favor of continuing the, um, shared services because it does help other municipalities, it also helps the village, you know, work together and working well, you know, with other towns, other villages, and that does need to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Walker, your feelings of cooperation and/or consolidation with surrounding entities such as the school district, town of Elvian?
I've always been for shared services with the town of Elvian, town of Gaines, whatever community that we couldn't do this with because of the fact that it will cost for everyone concerned and help with the tax situations in the village.
Thank you. Mr. McMurray, your feelings on cooperation, consolidation of services with surrounding entities such as the school district and the town of Elvian?
Like every, like everyone else, I'm full, I'm all in favor of shared services, but it's gonna come down to two simple things, difference between use and abuse and communications speed. Full transparency and making sure that no one is taking advantage of one service over another or one municipality over another. Again, full transparency, full communication.
Thank you. Ms. Riley, your feelings of cooperation and/or consolidation of services with surrounding entities such as the town of Elvian and the Elvian Center School District?
I agree with what everyone else has said about, uh, shared governance. I think it's right on target. I think isolationism is probably what has gotten us into the conundrum we're in. Uh, we need to expand, uh, shared services because that's how we are going to grow as a community, how people are gonna get to know us, and when we, when we're able to provide water and sewage to others, it's gonna make everything better for all of us, for them and for us.
Thank you. Okay, this is a mayoral question. It's a thirty second response time. Ms. Alzheimer, you are first. Please discuss your experience with preparing a budget, what organization was it for, and roughly the dollar amount.
So my experience with budgets is, uh, the time that I was at Brockport, State University of New York. I worked eighteen years in the vice president's office, where we actually completed a history-making first ever campaign, capital campaign of twenty-five million dollars, uh, and ended up over, over, uh, achievers, and twenty-six million dollars in less than five years. So my experience with budgets is working directly with the vice president for the Division of Advancement.
Thank you. Mr. Graham, please discuss your experience preparing a budget, what organization was it for, roughly the dollar amount?
I have extensive experience, uh, working on budgets. Uh, the last budget was with the Arch of Genesis Alliance, had a budget of twenty-three million dollars. Process was, uh, started three months in advance, starting with department heads getting their input as far as dirt needs for services, uh, generating revenue, projecting revenue cuts for Medicaid, very extensive, uh, spend a lot of work in budgets. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Javier, please discuss your experience with preparing a budget, what organization was it for, uh, roughly the dollar amount?
I was actually new to, uh, the budgeting process. I do understand, uh, it's a process where you involve department heads, you involve the board members that are there with you, uh, to come up with that final budget. Uh, I'm very excited to see what we can do, how we can make things more efficient, and if there's any other, uh, room for improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. This next question is a trustee question. Uh, it's regarding canal as a resource. Ms. Walker, you are first. Answer is a thirty second response. Utilizing the canal to enhance or improve the area for economic development in Elvian, what are your suggestions?
I know that, I know that, uh, there has been a New York State Commission that has looked at using the canal as a resource, and I think we should, we, we need to look very clearly at, at those suggestions that they made, because it would be great to have a small marina up here, it would be great to have boat launches closer to the village, in the village itself, so that we can expand businesses downtown by bringing in more business through the canal system.
Thank you. Mr. McMurray, using the canal as a resource, suggestions for utilizing the canal to enhance or to improve economic development in Elvian?
Starting small for using the canal for economic development, I would, you can start off with little, little canal launches, or, uh, little kayak launches along the canal. Our, our little, uh, little slice of heaven that we call the canal here is not quite that big, where we can put full-on marinas in for big boats to come in, they can stick apart and then others come, but it's really hard for kayakers to come in and stop, dock, come and enjoy any shots that we may have, would love to get some food trucks down around here as well, food trucks to stop in, but little boat launches that the kayakers can pull up in and stop would be nice to start.
Thank you. Ms. Riley, canal as a, a resource, please give your suggestions for utilizing canal to enhance or improve the economic development in Elvian?
Actually, I think, uh, we should pursue, uh, grants to assist us in developing the canal, uh, as with launches and things, but I, I actually think that there are already people in our community who want to, uh, bring resources to the canal, and we just have to be open and work with them and not be resisted, you know? In other words, uh, sometimes we'll have to decrease the rent so we can let these people who want to develop the canal come in.
Thank you. Mr. Conrad? Canal is a resource, your suggestions for utilizing the canal to enhance or improve economic development in Elvian?
Uh, I think the canal is, um, a great opportunity. We have in Elvian, um, we, we have tons of businesses down there, we also need to utilize it more. We have the canal path, we have, you know, obviously Tinsel right here, um, we need to establish more on the canal as well as try to, um, take advantage of the opportunities that we do have.
Thank you. I'm gonna talk about the next issue a little bit, and we're gonna take a little bit of a recess, but can, can think about your response. Uh, it will be responded by everyone, so it's, it's, defunding. So defunding of the police, you know, is defined as, uh, reallocated, reallocated, or redirecting funding away from the police department or other agencies that are funded by the municipality. So the question is gonna be, we hear a lot of controversy about that phrase, defunding the police, so what does that mean to you, and how will that affect your interaction with our local police department? So that's all over the board, that's why we're gonna have a little bit of time to think about it. You can talk about consolidation, overseeing services, uh, you might not realize how well-trained some of our officers are, you might think they need more training, you might think they need to incorporate more mental health professionals, so you can make that answer whatever you want, but I think the number of questions that came in regarding that is folks wanna know what you think about defunding the police, what it means to you, and your opinion or relationship will be with our local Elvian Police Department. It's critical, it's important, and that's why we're giving you a little bit of time to think about it, say, what's your interpretation? And you don't have to interpret that phrase the way it's used, that's a catch-all right now. It's like a railing pride, but that's the way the questions are coming in, they're using that phrase, so I'm repeating that to you, but you use your interpretation. What we wanna know, and I believe, is what your relationship will be like, and what position you have to improve or change your relationship. So we're gonna take a little bit of a recess while folks think about it, so you can stand up, stretch, whatever you need to do, and we'll keep you right there. Second response time. Mr. Javier, you're going to respond first. Um, and the question's regarding the catch-all phrase, defund the police, I'm not happy with it, or asking you what you think of it, because of the variety of opinions, it's a national slogan. I think the intent is, what we're reading on some of the cards, we went back and looked at them, is what do you envision your relationship with our police department will be? That can be everything from, I want to do, now is a budget, we have too many officers, we don't have enough officers, they need more intervention training, they're so specifically trained, they're excellently trained, I'm happy for the personal service, they know the neighborhoods, they know the merchants, they know the people that live here. I think basically what people are looking for is what your intentions would be, what your relationship would be with our police department. So you can take that however you want, but I think people wanna know, are you supportive? Is it gonna be an upheaval? Uh, I think I mentioned earlier, this was an issue in the previous mayoral contest. Um, and I know Ms. Riley remembers that, because it was a question, and it wasn't, it was poorly stated then as well, because it's, it's just too, too large an issue, but give us a quick response to what you feel their relationship would look like. That's how I'm posing the question to each of you, and you get to begin. Sixty seconds, sorry. You ready? Go.
I think it would be a great relationship. Uh, I do think we need to do it a little bit more, um, when it comes to the village side of it, village board side of it. We, I actually talked to the chief, and one of the things I wanted to implement was a report, where we break down the village of board of quadrants, and we list, um, generic, nothing just too specific, uh, what incidents occurred in a given month. Uh, that way we know if there's issues in one part of the village, or if there's no issues in another part, um, I think that would be important. Uh, that way all residents can understand, hey, we are, we are watching, we wanna know what's going on in the village, um, and we wanna make sure public safety is paramount all throughout the village.
Thank you. Ms. Alzheimer, how are you, what do you envision your relationship with the APD to be?
My relationship would be a partnership, because I believe in law and order, uh, first and foremost. Uh, defund, to me, is meant to be negative, um, and so when we talk about defunding the police, I'm not gonna single out the police, because each and every department needs to be fiscally responsible, and not just the police department. So I envision my relationship being, uh, that of a partnership, not only with the village police, but with every single, uh, village, uh, department, um, being fiscally responsible.
Thank you. Mr. Graham?
Yeah, when they talk about defunding the police, it means to me that the diverting necessary funds for training for our police officers, um, they have a very important job, they're a very, excellent resource as a community, and if anything, you know, we need further training as far as, uh, NRCAM training, mental health funding, to make sure they're, they're properly trained for those types of calls, and I, I would see myself as a partnership with the police. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McMurray?
Okay, I think I'm live. All right. Defunding the police for me, just as a blanket statement, even in general, is just a negative, it's just a negative statement. I don't take anything from it at all. I, one hundred percent back to, back to police in every facet. I had an opportunity back in October to go and have a tour of the Amherst Police Facility, their training facility. I left with my jaw on the, on the ground. It is something that I feel that we need to have here in Orleans County, we need to have for Elvian. Uh, public safety is paramount. It is something you cannot put a price tag on, it doesn't matter. I would like to see more officers, I like to see officers on foot. Uh, back when I was growing up, some of you as well, when we grew up, we had police officers walking on the street. Those officers knew our names, they kept the youth in line. We knew when someone was walking around a corner, they knew our names, they knew, that we knew that they knew where we lived. That's something that's missing from around here, so defunding the police, again, that's just a negative statement for me in general.
Thank you. Ms. Riley?
I agree with a lot of things that Tim just said about, uh, the increased presence of the police in the community, and I want to say, as having a, um, family member that has had COVID called so many times in the last several months, and every time they came, the police was there also, and I also know that police provide life-saving, uh, services, sometimes when they're the first ones on the scene, so decreasing that avenue for our community, uh, would not be a good thing, and, uh, I would like to see them on the bicycles once again, and so that people in the community can wave at them and crawl to them and know them, uh, more intimately than we do now. So I think that it's a positive thing, um, to have them here in our community.
Thank you. Mr. Conrad?
First of all, I would like to build a better relationship with the officers that we have, because without them, there would be nobody to protect us. I would also like to possibly see more, like the other candidates have said, um, babysit and events a little bit more. Um, but other than that, I, I, I'm totally against the, uh, defending of the police because they aren't necessary. We do need them, they do offer a lot of life support as well as protecting us, um, on road blue line, and we, we definitely need them. Um, as far as the budget and everything, maybe sit down with Chief Mogo and going line by line on the budget to see where all the costs are, if at any, to cut, to cut it all, but I don't see that right now. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Walker?
Defunding the police has become a catchphrase these days, that I don't feel can apply in any way to Elvian. We need our police officers. I would like to see more of them out there, and I agree with everyone else, it would be great to see them out on bicycles and green in community, but I have seen and watched them over the past few years and, um, seen how they have integrated even more with the community. So, no, I am not in favor of defunding the police. If they need more training, they get training. If they, if we need to increase their pay, then we may have to sacrifice a little bit somewhere else to maintain that public safety.
Thank you. Our next question is a mayoral question, um, but before we get to that, I truly would like to thank everybody here for several things. Uh, one is respect that you are showing the candidates and each other, usability, and good citizenship, and your questions are excellent, and when the questions are coming during, you know, that doesn't sound like it means much for going into this, you know, we kinda follow Facebook, clearly you're not the Facebook brother. That's it? That's it?
Some of the tragedy of people down there, you could do something like this, and you're always wondering whether to kinda walk in the door, and then something driven after trail, lots of incidents, but I'm so impressed with the way this goes, how you conduct yourselves, but I have to say, for the average God and I'll be coming in here, I would expect no less, and I sincerely mean that, that there's nothing else, we feel each other with respect. We're not like grueling at all, but we are good citizens, respectful, and so, I will feel appreciated.
We are onto the next question. Uh, this is a mayoral question, it's a thirty second answer, so please answer. How do you plan to encourage business, cooperation for the village? Ms. Alzheimer, you're first.
Tom, I plan on having conversations. I was in fundraising for eighteen years and served at, at, at the pleasure of the vice president for those eighteen years, and so fundraising and fundraising was part of what I did for the college, so having conversations, uh, with businesses, um, to discuss what they can bring to So having conversations with businesses to discuss what they can bring to Albion. But again, making sure that rent is affordable for them to come. You know, I've had conversations and I've been informed that there are businesses that want to come to Albion, but the rent is too high. So having conversations, not only with the business owners, but the building owners.
Thank you. Mr. Graham? How would you plan to encourage businesses to move operations to the village?
One, you have to start relationships with businesses and promote Albion as a whole. It's a great place to live. It's a nice community. Promote the infrastructure and, you know, make it attractive to businesses. If you promote it, they will come.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Javier?
I think it's important to actually go to the current business owners. See what issues that they're incurring, if there's any type of development that needs to be done, if there's any grants that can be accessible to them. I think word of mouth is your first stage in encouraging businesses and potential business owners to grow within our community. I know in the past, there's been a perception that Albion's an anti-business or not business-friendly. We need, as a community, change that. And that's a culture thing.
Thank you. Just questions for everyone. Mr. Graham, we're going to begin with you. It's a 60-second response time. And it's concerning the aged, deteriorated village infrastructure. Please give one suggestion for addressing this village issue problem, water, sewer, sidewalk, lighting.
Addressing the aging infrastructure, I would recommend reaching out to our state government, looking for grants for capital improvements, any types of funding, reaching out to our constituents, Mr. Holly, Bob Ward, looking for monies to help fund the project.
Thank you. Mr. Javier? Want to repeat the question? So we have aged and deteriorated village infrastructure. Give one suggestion for addressing this village problem, and that could be water, sewer, sidewalk, lighting.
In my opinion, I think it starts with the water as our money maker. With the issue that we had about two years ago, three years ago, where we had the main burst, that's an issue. And that occurs all throughout the village. I think we, just a foundation of going out, doing valve checks, determining, talking to our village department heads, where, what issues within our infrastructure needs to be addressed, what hasn't been addressed, what's the status of it? And then coming up with a plan, whether it's six, eight, a year out, what can we, how can we address it? Is there funds available? And what is the important aspect of the village that really needs to be addressed as soon as possible?
Thank you. Ms. Alzheimer? This is about aged, deteriorated village infrastructure. Give a suggestion for addressing this village issue pertaining water, sewer, sidewalk, lighting.
So when it comes to water and sewer, that equals public health for me. So continuing with the progress that we've made on updating the sewer, updating the water, and keeping those current so that water is not contaminated. You know, when I go to my faucet to get water, I don't, I don't second guess whether it's clean, whether it's odorless. When I wash my clothes, I know that my clothes are going to come out clean. So just continuing with the processes that we currently have in place. I believe there is a grant that we have, that we're working on with the water plant, but just, but continuing what we have already started.
Thank you. Ms. Riley? This is about deteriorated aged infrastructure. Please give a suggestion for addressing this village issue, water, sewer, sidewalks, lighting.
Actually, that is a very complex question. And I'm going to start off by saying that we need to come up with a very comprehensive plan, a plan that starts with a year, three-year, and then a five-year and a 10-year plan so that we methodically attack this problem and not just do stopgap measures consistently. We need to, now that the federal government is opening up for infrastructure changes, we need to be out there researching, getting monies, and getting grants from the state and federal level for these projects. But we need to have a plan in place. It's not just grab as you go. We need to plan it out and then attack it methodically because when that money dries up, we still need to pay for it and have a plan in place. So get a plan, follow it.
Thank you. Mr. Conrad? Aged, deteriorated village infrastructure. Please give us one suggestion for addressing this village issue, water, sewer, sidewalks, lighting.
I would say with the water department. I know after speaking with Adam Rush on the water treatment plan, he has a, I can't remember the name of it, but he's got this system to where it can pinpoint every single shut-off and somehow mark it on a screen to where we could, everything could be updated and everybody knows where the shut-offs are. Set the scramble around if we have a water main break like a couple of years ago on North Main Street, when it flooded out of the basement, I know there was an issue with trying to get the water shut off. That, right there with the system that he's trying to implement moving forward could stop cases like that and stop basements from getting flooded out, update the water.
Thank you. Ms. Walter? Aged, deteriorated village infrastructure. Please give us one suggestion for addressing this village issue, water, sewer, sidewalks, and/or lighting.
I agree with the other candidates. I agree that the water and sewer is very important. But when I first ran for office quite a while ago, we talked about sidewalks quite a bit. And I would really love to see the sidewalks in this village get, not only get repaired and new ones put down so people can walk in safety, I would also really love to see a major effort made to get the Brown Street Bridge reopened and open up the east side of the village for those people that live on Demore Street and on Lightning Drive. That bridge is very important. I think we need to really look at a way of getting that done, too.
Thank you. Mr. McMurray? Aged, deteriorated village infrastructure. Please give us a suggestion for addressing this village issue, water, sewer, sidewalks, and lighting.
First thing you got to do when you're addressing the aging infrastructure is you got to do a survey. So we got to work with all the different department heads, catch with the code enforcer, walk around, whether it's DPW head and code enforcer, looking at sidewalks, looking at roads, looking at lighting, determining and coming up with a plan of attack, then working with water and working with sewer, determining in a schedule as far as which way we go and then breaking it down and then attacking them based on that. We can't just go and attack sidewalks all at once when something else is aging up underneath. I agree wholeheartedly. Sidewalks need to get done. There is a manner in which it can be done. It's a matter of how we approach it. I feel there could be a way that we can come up with a part-time crew that works on dedicated just strictly the sidewalks. It's a matter of legalities and whether we can assess a fee or work with homeowners to where they cover half and we, but it's stuff we got to look at. Otherwise, it's all going to start with a survey and actually implementing the system that Dan related a little to, which is the ARC GIS system.
Thank you. The next question is for trustees only. Mr. Conrad, you will be the first to answer to 30-second response. Give us an example of one of your skills or strengths. How will you use that skill or strength to benefit our community?
I would say honestly, one of the skills and strengths that I have is team building with the boards and organizations that I've been with, organizing things, putting things together, putting different people in places. Knowing how to delegate certain things is important, too, because if you don't have the right people to delegate, you know, it's a leader without the right people to delegate to do things also. So you need to put all the pieces in place to do that. And like I said, as far as organizations and boards that I've been with.
Thank you. Ms. Walter? Give us an example of one of your skills or strengths. How would you use that skill set or strength to benefit our community?
A lot of people tell me I am very, very organized, and I am. So I would use that strength to help the village clerk's office and the code's office because I feel that they really need someone in there with organizational skills that will get grants to microfilm, microfiche, memory stick, all those records that are sitting up in that room that we looked at. And I just believe I could, I could help and do best right there.
Thank you. Mr. McMurray? Give us an example of one of your skills or strengths. How would you use that skill or strength to benefit our community?
There would be two. I would have to say the first one would be communication. Say what you mean, be what you say. We can keep that communication clear between all departments, between all people. There should be no, there should be no issues. Second thing would be tenacity. I'm not a big fan of the word "no." Let's find a way to work around it and find a way to make it work.
Thank you. Ms. Riley? Give us an example of one of your skills or strengths, and how would you use that skill or strength to benefit our community?
I am so excited about this question because I don't know how to describe the skill I have. I know that I love working with people and I love getting the best that they have to offer. I believe in people knowing their jobs and mine being, they're cheerleaders and supporters and working side by side to do what I can do to get the job done. I'll do the administrative part and push. They do what they, what they know, and I'll do what I know.
Thank you. So this next question is for everyone. It's a quick answer. It says 15 seconds. Let's see how you deal with that. I think 15 seconds to answer it and 15 seconds for your, for the next part with your idea of how you spread that word. So the question is, enough of what's wrong with Albion. Tell me what you love about Albion and how you plan to spread that word. 30 seconds. Mr. Javier?
I love the community. I love the fact that you know your neighbor. You can walk down the canal, it's a beautiful sight. I think we have a group of people here who are invested in it, who want to make it better as you can see by the crowd here compared to the last time around. I think it's the community and just everybody who wants to make it better. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Alzheimer? Enough about what's wrong with Albion. Tell me something you love about it and how you would spread that word.
So what I love about Albion, it's my hometown. It's where I was raised. It's where I raised my children, and I call Albion home. A lot of times, you know, a lot of people will judge me by the way I look, that I'm a city girl, but I love to say that I'm a country girl from Albion, New York.
Thank you. Mr. Graham? Tell me what you love about Albion and how you would spread the word.
As the sign reads, it's a great place to live. I really believe that. And it's a quiet, quaint town. People are friendly. Walk around the strawberry festival and you can see just people enjoy it here, and I'd agree with that.
Thank you. Ms. Walter? Tell me what you love about Albion and how you would spread the word.
What I love about Albion is the way the people come together when there is a need. The building of the Hoyt Library is one example. That took a lot of work by quite a few people, and I really enjoy that library. And it's one of the best things about this community.
Thank you. Mr. McMurray? Tell me what you love about Albion and how you would spread the word.
The one thing I really love about Albion, it's real simple and as cliché as it sounds, and I can't sum it up in 15 seconds, but it's not the community, though. It's the people, plain and simple. You cannot have an interaction with someone without it being different, no matter who it is you talk to, whether it is a form of entertainment, whether they make you laugh, whether they make you cry. Every person you talk to is a different walk of life, even though we're all from the same little slice of pie.
Thank you. Ms. Riley? Tell me what you love about Albion and how you would spread the word.
Of course, I love the people. I wouldn't have come back here. I've lived all over the world and I've settled here. And when I say live, I've lived not a month, but years, and I've come back here. My family's here. My schoolmates are here. I love the, I love that I was able to immediately get involved in community activities and feel welcomed. I mean, it's a place that I tell my friends that I've met over the years, come and visit me here. It's a great place to live.
Thank you. Mr. Conrad? Tell me what you love about Albion and how you would spread the word.
I love the community that we live in, from the organizations, and also I completely love the small businesses that we have because, I'll tell you what, everybody wants to compare towns and villages. We have some of the best business owners in the village of Albion that we have. And you can't go wrong if you go into a business and you talk to them. I would encourage everybody, go into a business because I love the businesses here in Albion and the community and everybody's wonderful, how everybody just come together and use it.
Thank you. Okay, this next question is for trustees. Mr. McMurray, you will be first. Give me your suggestions for programs to engage our youth. It's a 60-second answer. I'm sorry, can you repeat that? Please give me some suggestions for programs that engage our youth.
All right, so we already have several programs that engage between football. We do have soccer programs. One of the programs I'm actively involved in right now is working to get basketball courts up at Bullard Park so we could actually start a youth basketball program as well to keep a spring sport going in lieu of other sports, to keep the parks going. I'm also looking to, working with the Bullard Park Improvement Committee as well to put additional things in smaller, in some of the smaller parks, Lafayette, St. Joe's, Vets, Carousel, to keep these kids enthralled, to try to help maybe get them off of their cell phones and video games. At the same time, working with the Parks Recreation Director to even try to maybe expand their parks program back out to the smaller ones, which comes back to community involvement. So that's stuff I want to do to get the, get youth involvement back in.
Thank you. Ms. Riley? Yours? You know the question?
Yes, I know the question.
You're answering at the same time, aren't you?
I'm excited by the question. I think one of the things that we can do is, I don't know if any of you know that, but the schools have students come down to the, come down to the meetings. And I would like to see the board engage them more and by asking them questions that don't just come down there and look at their phones, but we should ask them questions afterwards. But I also would like for us to get a recreation director, someone who would be in charge of the parks and activities year-round for our students so that we can have planned activities to engage students year-round in all the parks, not just in Bullard Park. That would be an awesome. But that will take planning because you'll have to figure out a budget for that, and that person will have to be awesome because our kids are very active and we want to engage them on all levels.
Thank you. Mr. Conrad? Your suggestions on programs to engage our youth?
First of all, I would say working hand-in-hand with the recreational director. We have Mr. Grillo and see what he can do to expand that. I would like to see the youth car program extended possibly all year long, say two Saturdays a month or something, where it comes with some kind of programming for kids. I'm also bringing back youth fishing derby this year coinciding with the food truck rodeo that we're doing. So there is a great, there are a lot of things with the kids, involving on doing the kids' Games of Rocket Heart, more summer festival, I'm sorry, fun. Games of Rocket Heart, more summer festival, I'm sorry, it's not the wrong guy, I'm changing names, but... Yeah, so we do have a lot going on for kids, and I want to see it extended, because everybody says, "We need a better tomorrow." What is tomorrow, are you? So we need to show them a better tomorrow. And what better can we do than get them out there, get them off their phones, like everybody says, and get them participating in the great outdoors activities, and doing a weekend to improve that. Thank you.
Thank you. This next question is for everybody. It's a sixty-second response. Ms. Elsheimer, you're first. What strengths does the village have, and how would you build on those strengths to make us more prosperous? And by strengths, I think National Trust calls those unique assets. Something that's significant. For instance, we're on the canal, we're a canal community. So what strengths does the village have, and how would you build on those assets?
I think the one asset that the village has is that we are the county seat. And I think we need to build on that. And part of that would be the beautification of Albion. Bringing back what I remember growing up in Albion, the stores downtown, that community feel, neighbors caring about each other. As the county seat, we should be the top of our game, and we're not there. So building on our reputation, or that label as the county seat.
Thank you. Mr. Graham? Do you like the question? What strengths does the village have, and how would you build on those strengths to make us more prosperous?
Some of the strengths we have here is the canal. It's a nice resource, but to really capitalize that, that we really need to develop our downtown area and bring some storefronts there and some businesses to attract more canal travel. Another strength is our historic cemetery, the national monument. It's a historical monument, so, you know, what a great place to promote that, as far as broadcasting our great community here.
Thank you. Mr. Javier? Would you like to repeat that question? What strengths does the village have, and how would you build on those strengths to make us more prosperous?
I believe it's the community, the fact that you have a group of people who want to invest, who want to make the village better in all ways and all aspects. It's not just the downtown, it's not just Thirty-One, it's not just the Arnold Gregory complex. Everybody wants Albion to be better. But we still are striving to be better than we are now. I do believe that as we come together going forward, we can make small changes into big changes, and make Albion overall better.
Thank you. Ms. Riley? What strengths does the village have, and how would you build on those strengths to make us more prosperous?
I really think the strength of the village are its people. It really is its people. Because without them, we're not going to improve our downtown area at all. We're not going to get anywhere. Because how the village looks is the responsibility of each and every one of us. I would like to say we have beautiful buildings, but our buildings are only as beautiful as the people who own them and live in them make them. So my thing would be to encourage us all to have pride in where we live, and let that be the jump-off point of moving Albion forward, going from starting now.
Thank you. Mr. Conrad? What strengths does the village have, and how would you build on those strengths to make us more prosperous?
I would say, if you're gonna say strengths, then you gotta say there's weaknesses. And Albion, to me, has no weaknesses. We have spots to improve, yes, but our strengths are the community, are our businesses, are the organizations, are the groups that we have, the people in here that are, you know, here to see us. All seven of us wanting to see, you know, the community better. We, you know, we have a lot of strengths, and just going forward together, I think we can get to where we can stand proud and make Albion bright like some say that it used to be. I think it's, you know, it's improving, it's getting better, and, you know, going forward with everybody's cooperation, I think we can get there.
Thank you. Ms. Walter?
I agree with everyone here when they say Albion's strength is its people. But we need to remember that in order for us as a community to be even stronger, we have to be inclusive, and we have to make sure that we're reaching out on a constant basis to everyone in the community, and letting them know that we are very interested in what their ideas are, and we would love for them to bring them forward. I think more community committees might help, not necessarily paid, but volunteer. And everyone, everyone in this room has ideas. And we need to really listen to people now, because without them, we're not going to do anything for this village. So everyone here, I challenge you tonight, go home and think of a great idea, and bring it forth.
Thank you. Mr. McMurray? What strengths does the village have, and how would you build on those strengths to make us more prosperous?
I would say one of the biggest strengths that we have as a village is a sense of pride, a sense of belonging. Most tend not to go anywhere, and most, as you've heard, myself included, after we go away, we somehow find our way back. It's a matter of loving where we are, wanting to be here. Exposing that is the one way that we can make ourselves better. Make the village a village of opportunity. Work with the building owners, work with homeowners. See what we can do, what we can do to help them, whether it's to find them grants, whether it's to form some type of committee of helping, or bringing helping hands and working to make the neighborhoods better. Working with building owners to see what their plans are, helping them to recruit for businesses, whether it's working with tax breaks or whatever the case may be on a lower level. But getting that sense of pride and rebuilding that, that's the key to making this village better.
Thank you. This is the last question before we move on to wrap up in your final statements. I apologize, you're gonna have to give a quick answer, because it's a very, very complex issue. Thirty-second response. Mr. Graham, you're gonna go first. So we all value and have, are concerned about our fire and EMS services. And so I'd like a suggestion for improving the financial staffing challenges faced by them, and that is, you can include the F D, EMS services, would be COVA, Fire Department, so basically innovative things that you're thinking of that would help them become or be more viable, so that we can retain those services. I understand you only have thirty seconds, so you're not gonna solve the problem, but people want to know if you've ever thought about it, or if you share your concerns, because I know right now that the task force is working on it. And Mr. Graham, you're first.
So the EMS crisis, I think it's a serious issue in this area. We're talking about COVA and volunteer firefighters. The funding for COVA is not sustainable, they're losing money. Some of the ideas I've thought about as far as maybe caution among the towns, the village, to spread that cost out, and it is a valuable resource in this community. I hate to see anything happen to have disappeared. There was a suggestion in the hub, COVA suggested a twenty-five-dollar charge for every household. I think it's a small price to pay to keep that service here.
Thank you. Mr. Javier? Need the question repeated?
I think it's important to work with the town to determine what issues that COVA is incurring. I'm asking indirectly, hey, where are you needing additional funding or additional help? Is there, again, a lack of funding, or is there any specific equipment you might need or anything like that? I think it's a, I think you're looking at everything that they do, what inefficiencies there are, if there are any, and just being open to any type of changes or suggestions they may have.
Thank you. Ms. Elsheimer?
I think those are valuable services that we need, but sometimes thinking outside the box and not doing things as we do normally. And I'm a big believer in fundraising and friend-raising. And you don't know until you ask. So you can't be afraid to ask, you know, for help, ask for donations. And donors don't have to live in Albion to get to Albion. And so I think fundraising would be the way to go.
Thank you. Mr. Conrad?
I would say, first of all, the task force that Mr. Neerhafer and Mr. Banker are working on is a great asset as far as the community goes. And also COVA, as a board of directors member to COVA, I do see where we're hurting financially, where we're needing equipment, where we do need a new ambulance with a new stretcher that's big enough to carry the, I don't want to sound bad, but the overweight, yes. Because there's times where the staffing, we only have one or two people on staff, and they can't get the stretcher out enough to get people. So financially, yes, we can reach out.
Thank you. Ms. Walter?
Would you repeat the question?
Certainly. We all have concerns about fire and EMS services, and we know that they have financial and staffing issues right now. So how do you feel about that? And how would you, what are your ideas for helping them face those challenges? This could be include the AFD, EMS services, COVA, Fire Department?
I agree with the fact that the twenty-five-dollar fee that they were speaking of is a reasonable fee. However, maybe we could also do a little bit of thinking outside the box. Maybe it's time to possibly hire some firefighters that can be first on the scene and working to control that fire while they wait with volunteers. It could also help to, once again, bring up the Explorer Program and see if we can get some youth in this community interested in helping COVA and helping the Fire Department.
Thank you. Mr. McMurray?
So without being redundant, repeating everything, I completely agree with everybody, and actually, I'm glad Sandy just started to allude on that, because that is the one thing that I am going to be pushing across the board. I've already spoke with the chief of the Fire Department as well about reinstating the Explorers Program over on their end as well. I know that their issue right now is getting someone to lead the program. That seems to be the issue all the time, is leadership, and that's something, again, that we gotta work with, but that's the biggest issue, is getting people in, and maybe hiring people is the way to go.
Thank you. Ms. Riley?
Once again, I do agree with the majority of what people are saying in terms of exploring those options. But I have become a believer since I've been working with Ms. Elsheimer and this friend and fundraising, and fundraising. I do see that as an opportunity also to get some needed supplies, quick, fast, and in a hurry, as opposed to sometimes waiting for a grant to materialize. That we need to be able to create an atmosphere where we can get those funds. Five hundred dollars adds up really quick.
Thank you. So approaching closing statements, Ms. Walter will be going first. While you are ready yourself mentally prepared, I'd like to thank the audience again for the nature of your questions, the excellence. Thank you for attending. And for all the volunteers, most of them are here this evening helping. This wouldn't be possible without the number of volunteers that we have. And as rough as this may have seemed, it would have been a lot tougher if we had fewer volunteers. There are just a lot of stuff to take care of, including P A's always give us trouble. I don't get it. But anyway, thank you very much. Thanks for volunteers, thank you to Lockstone, and of course, Lake Country Media for putting the whole thing on and sponsoring it. We would not have forums if it were not for the people volunteers who need sponsors. So thank you so much. I bow his honor to applause. Before we begin with your closing statements, I'd like the candidates to leave information of how to get in touch with each of you, should people have additional questions. We got to most of the areas of most of the questions. As you know, and you know, we consolidated questions. We did the best of our ability to get everything out there. I hope you feel like, you know, you had a variety of questions posed to you, and you came up with some great answers. You're great for it, you're great candidates. I applaud you for your citizenship, and you're good citizens that are taking your turn to serve. So thank you very much for that. So it's a ninety-second closing statement, and we're going to begin with Ms. Walter.
Everyone speaks of Albion as once being a busy, vibrant community. I strongly believe that it can be that way again. However, it's going to take each and every one of us to get the job done. That means downtown building owners, businesses all around the community wherever they are located, village employees, and most importantly, village residents must commit to re-establishing this village as a great place to live and work. It is important for you to know that the three of us, Vicki, Joyce, and I, have no hidden agendas, that we are committed to open government, accountability, and responsible leadership. We have made no promises to anyone. We do not say that we know everything. We do say that we are willing to learn and capable of committing ourselves to running this village on a daily basis to the best of our abilities. With this election, you have a chance to join Vicki, Joyce, and I in moving Albion forward. We hope that the boulders will give us this opportunity. Thank you for joining us this evening, and be assured that if we have any further questions of us, that we are always ready to listen and respond.
Thank you. Mr. McMurray?
All right. First, I just want to thank everybody for coming out, those watching at home. In the end, I'm not a politician. I have no aspirations to ever become one. I'm just a normal, day-to-day American that just wants to be here, and wants what's best for my community and for those who I'm sharing it with. My availability is what's gonna grant me the ability to work diligently with departments, organizations, and public officials, and the general public in hopes of bringing back more of that personal touch and rebuilding the bonds that will strengthen the very fabric that holds our great community together. I'm not running for trustee for me. I'm running on it for we, in hope that everyone here is to call to arms and starts to become more involved, no matter how small it is, as it's the small things that matters most. Thank you again for all that helped out and make this event, and ensured that it ran without a hitch, minus the mics. And remember, it didn't be the change that you want to see. You can get out and vote March fifteenth.
Thank you. Ms. Riley?
First of all... First of all, I want to thank everyone again for being here tonight and giving us an opportunity to share our ideas with you. I want to end by saying, we need to move Albion forward, and moving Albion forward is a movement, not a party. Our survival depends on it. It depends on changing our trajectory. We have a plan, and we have a team to start that forward movement. We will be available. We will be transparent. We will assess. We will act. We will reassess and continue. We will capitalize on our resources by continuing to grow them. And part of those assets are water, sewer, and the cemetery. But most importantly, we will not move sideways. We will only move forward. Please vote March fifteenth for the team of Elsheimer, Riley, and Walter.
Thank you. Mr. Conrad? Mr. Conrad.
Can you raise your question? I guess I chose to, to run to, you know, help the, the motivation that Albion has going for us. We have, we have a lot of stuff going. Um, you know, I'm involved quite a bit in the community, I want to keep that going. I want to take everything that I've learned from all the boards, all the organizations, move into the village board. Um, be a team player. Uh, there's just, there's just so much to say in such little time. I mean, we, we have a great community, we have a great village from everything that, that, that we have. Um, there's, like I said, there's not enough words to say. Um, if anybody has any questions for me, please feel free, stop by my store, call me, email me. I left cards, um, in a box over there underneath the window, feel free to grab one. It's got a little description of the stuff that, you know, I've been involved with. Um, I, I think together as a team, no matter how it ends up between the seven of us, um, there is gonna be, it's definitely gonna be three new members. So however it ends up, I look forward to working with, if I'm elected, working with the other two that are elected. Or if I'm not elected, I'm right across the street from the village office where my store is. I'd be happy to still work and continue all my efforts and work with the team that is elected. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Javier.
Just want to thank, uh, Michael, Devon Afeeds, all the supporters, along with the Lockstone and the Penny Saver. Uh, I also want to say thank you to all the outgoing board members. Uh, thank you for your service to the community along with Linda Babcock. She is a treasure to our community and you couldn't do anything without her. Uh, when it comes to the village, I do think, again, we gotta tell the community at large, we are looking for business, uh, transparency in all aspects of the village, um, in a culture of can-do and positivity. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Elsheimer.
I think, uh, Dr. Maya Angelo said it best, do the best you can, uh, until you know better. And when you know better, you do better. And I think, um, all of us here know that we are on the, that, that, that the current path that we are on is not one of prosperity. And I think we all agree, a change, of course, is needed. The person coming into the office of the mayor needs to have the time, be available and accessible in order to make a difference. The next mayor needs to be available to meet with potential business owners or donors that are interested in investing in our community. March fifteenth is your opportunity as a registered village voter to make a difference. I ask you to vote moving Albion forward. I have not and will not make any campaign promises, but I will share this with you. I will always do what is in the best interest of Albion and its, and its community members. I will always be a great representation of Albion and will operate with transparency and integrity. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Graham.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out too, taking time out of your schedule to meet the candidates. I'd like to thank, uh, Lake Country Media for sponsoring and, and the Lockstone for hosting this event. Lastly, I would like to thank, uh, our outgoing board members as well, Eileen, Stan and Steve. Uh, thank you for your time and dedication to public service. I just want to encourage everybody, uh, march your feet, to get out and vote. It's, it's important, tell your friends, tell your neighbors, your community is depending on it. I also want to point out, uh, on the mayor ballot, there's, there's gonna be five selections. It's a little confusing, but there's only three candidates. I just wanted to reiterate that I am the only true and dependent candidate. So vote Kevin Graham, Albion pride, working together. I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes the closing statements. Um, I'd just like to say that you have excellent answers, what, what a great group of candidates. Um, we are fortunate and a difficult opportunity from among you, um, because you are such a great group and your answer is very informative, you have good questions. Uh, and thank you for taking the time to doing this. You know, I know there are other things everyone could be doing, and you could pretend, but also, you're good citizens, taking it from the serve of our community. And I'm personally grateful for that and the fact that I was on this side of the microphone. This is very difficult, but it is part of the territory. Thank you so much.